And welcome to the City of Troy Planning Commission meeting on February 9th, 2021. Tonight's meeting is being conducted remotely using the GoToMeeting Remote Meeting Platform. This is due to the COVID-19 pandemic. For those watching tonight's meeting on television or on the city's YouTube channel, we welcome you. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. Our first item of business after the roll call will be a resolution temporarily suspending and modifying the Planning Commission bylaws and rules of procedure, which will permit us to proceed with the meeting virtually and to afford an opportunity for us to receive public comment. We have made every effort to ensure that the meeting adheres to the requirements of the Open Meetings Act. We have provided opportunities for public comment via telephone and email prior to the meeting, and all public comment, if any, will be shared with the Planning Commission. At this time, I'd like to ask Kathy Sarnicki to conduct the roll call.
Mr. Faizan?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Malala Hawley?
Here.
Ms. Parakis?
Here.
Mr. Rahman?
Here.
Mr. Roush?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
We have a quorum. The next item is suspension of the Planning Commission bylaws. At this time, I'd like a member of the Planning Commission to move a resolution to suspend and modify our bylaws so that we may conduct tonight's meeting via a video conference link. Anyone?
Move it.
Mr. Rahman? Second. Tagle, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Malala Hawley?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rahman?
Yes.
Mr. Roush?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
And Mr. Faizan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is approval of the agenda, tonight's agenda. Any, anyone out there want to move that resolution?
I'll move.
Approve the, approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Mr. Faizan moves. Do we have a second?
Support.
Mr. Hudson, seconds.
Thank you.
You beat me.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Mahala Lali?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rahman?
Yes.
Mr. Roush?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Faizan?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is public comment for items submitted by email or telephone messages. Were there any public comments that came in for tonight's meeting?
There are no public comments submitted for this case.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Calum Cathy. We need to approve the minutes if I think you skipped that item.
Oh, did I? My gosh, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to, uh, someone from, uh, our commission to move to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Tagle's got the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Malala Hawley?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rahman?
Yes.
Mr. Roush?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Faizan?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is preliminary site plan, uh, site condominium, proposed Casa Village of Troy, east of Crooks Road, south of West, south of West South Boulevard, that's a mouthful, Section 20, currently zoned, R1B, one-family residential district. Who's taking this one?
I'll take it, Mr. Chairman, and, um, thank you to the Planning Commission. My name is Ben Carlisle, uh, the new director of planning for the City of Troy. It's nice to be here tonight. Um, Mr. IT support, can you make me a presenter?
Pardon? Say it again?
I, I, I'm just asking IT support to, to make me a presenter, if they can do that.
Oh, okay.
Brent says you're the news presenter.
Um, we're looking for Bob to wake up?
I can't. Yes, I. No, I made. There we go. How's that?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight before us is a proposed, um, four-site, uh, condominium project called Casca Village. The subject site is located, is, is approximately 2.2 acres. It's located on the north side of, of Andrew Drive. Andrew Drive is just east of Crooks Road and just south of South Boulevard. The applicant is requesting approval of a four-unit family detached site condominium project. The site itself is relatively flat with few elevation changes. We do note that there are some trees on the site, but the, but those trees are cottonwood, elder, and elm. Uh, they are non-regulated trees, so there is not any requirement for tree mitigation. Um, the applicant has provided, uh, the city, uh, the city with a wetland delineation report and knows that there are no, um, there is a wetland on site, however, is not regulated, um, by the state. With regards to the actual site plan before you, it's a pretty simple project. Um, it's four lots that will be accessed off a private road off Andrew Drive. This is the access point. This is Andrew Drive. Um, the four lots all meet the requirements, the R1B zoning ordinance, um, requirements, and they range in size from 15,000 square feet to 17,000 square feet. In addition, the applicant is proposing a T-turnaround, um, at the end of the, uh, the drive, um, and in theory, that could be extended if there are further sites further north that want to be connected to this road. Um, that turnaround has been reviewed and approved by the fire department. Um, the main point of discussion, um, from the Planning Commission tonight is with regards to the landscape plan. Um, the applicant, as you can see, is proposing to, to include a 10-foot greenbelt in between the road in the homes that back up, uh, in this direction. Um, as required by the ordinance, the applicant will be required to screen that with the minimum screening requirements in the ordinance. Um, and so at a minimum, they're going to, they're going to be required to screen that with, with landscape screening. Um, as part of the discussion, the Planning Commission, the applicant should discuss if there should be additional screening, um, either through the use of a fence or a wall and/or a combination of, of fence and landscaping. Um, and so that's a point of discussion that the Planning Commission should have with the applicant. Um, other point of discussion is the applicant has only submitted one elevation, um, because these are four houses, and we have the requirement that no more than three houses in a row can be a single elevation. Um, they are required to submit a second elevation for the building department review. Uh, so with that, uh, we are recommending preliminary site plan approval, um, with the, with the conditions that the applicant submit a final site plan, um, the applicant provide, uh, the road, uh, greenbelt screen based on the direction from the Planning Commission, the applicant work, uh, with the engineering department to work out the private road specifications, and lastly, that the applicant provide a second elevation for, uh, for a billing department review. That, Mr. Chairman, that, that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Uh, are there any questions for this staff, Mr. Mr. Savadon? You got your hand up?
Yeah, just, I'd like to add a couple things to Mr. Carlisle's absolutely amazing report.
Thank you.
Good job, Ben, as usual. Um, this, uh, this project, as Ben indicated, is, uh, a four-unit condominium, and I had a 13-slide PowerPoint presentation this evening to go over what a, uh, what a site condominium is, but I, I would leave it up to you, Mr. Chairman, if you want me to do that, but, but I can, I can summarize it in a nutshell. Basically, um, prior, prior to 1980, um, every type of single-family residential development that we saw in Michigan was a subdivision, was a plat. And, uh, actually, it was 1978, that, that the law, the laws changed, and this, there was a new act that was, uh, adopted by the legislature called the Condominium Act, and out of that came this, uh, concept of site condominiums, um, which, which is basically taking the, um, the elements of a condominium, which is, which is the individual unit, the general common area, and the limited common area, and instead of treating it vertically like, like you see in, uh, in, in towers, um, it was, it was treating it horizontally over, over land. And, um, the, the reason that this happened was it's a significantly faster way of, of developing single-family detached developments in Michigan. Um, the, the, the plating process takes, uh, if it's really effective, and I mean, we've got a, an engineer here, Mike Powell, Mike, if it's really effective and everything ticks all the buttons and it goes fast, it takes, you know, if you're lucky, it takes a year to go through the process. Sometimes it takes two years, depending on how, how effective the state, how responsive the state is in the county and all the different, um, reviewing agencies. Site condominiums are dramatically faster, and in fact, the way that we, that the City of Troy does, uh, handle site condominiums, we treat it as by right preliminary site plan reviews. Um, there's, there's some differences between, between, um, subdivisions and, and site condominiums that, that we don't have to go into. Uh, they don't look the same. If you're drive, drive into a, a site condominium, they have to meet the zoning standards, just like a subdivision, um, the street width's the same, the sidewalks are the same, everything is the same. Um, a condominium is a form of ownership. It's not, it's not a concrete thing. Um, but the, the takeaway here is that, for those of you, uh, sometimes when residents see the word condominium, they freak out and they think it's an attached product. Um, in, in some instances, it is, it, if the form of ownership can be for an attached product, but for a site condominium, it's a single-family detached development. This single-family detached development actually went before the Planning Commission initially in 2015, and it looked a lot like this, and it, and it got preliminary site plan approval in 2015. Uh, we have a requirement that you have three years to get final approval, get engineering approval, once you get preliminary site plan approval, and this development did not get final approval. Uh, within three years, it expired, so they're back with a very similar project. It's four units, and it's essentially the same project that we saw in 2015. Um, and one final thing, in 2015, there was a landscape plan that was submitted and that was approved by the Planning Commission. It's on page 41 of your packet. It's a, it's the, the last large drawing in your packet, and that shows what, what was proposed to the Planning Commission back in 2015, and, um, what was approved by the Planning Commission in 2015. So that, that gives you something, somewhat of a starting point, if you, uh, if you want to kind of discuss, um, you know, potentially what, what, uh, what that landscaping could be. Keeping in mind, uh, the parcel to the east has a, a landscape burn on that parcel. So, um, I just wanted to add, uh, that information, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. I just brought that, uh, drawing up on my computer.
As you can see, it's very similar to what, to the packet that's in front of you this evening.
Very good. Any questions, uh, for either Brent or, uh, Mr. Carlisle?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question for Mr. Carlisle.
Go ahead.
So, uh, I'm looking at the section of the packet with area width, height, and setbacks, and for maximum height, maximum lot area covered by buildings, and minimum floor area per unit, all those things are listed as unknown, and that they will be reviewed as part of building permits. Do we typically have that detail in the site plan? I don't recall seeing the language like this before.
Mr. Faizan, I apologize, I lost audio for a second. Can you just very briefly repeat your question if it was for me?
Sure, sure. I'm on the section of the packet that says area width, height, and setbacks, and maximum height, maximum lot area covered by buildings, and minimum floor area per unit are all listed as unknown?
Mm-hmm.
And then it says it'll be reviewed as part of building permits, and I was asking if that's typically the case, or do we typically have that detail in the site?
It's typically, typically I leave that as to be determined by the building department because we only have the building envelope, uh, which shows the boundaries of the site that can be built on based on setbacks, um, and because the applicant hasn't submitted finalized, uh, billing elevations and, and floor plans, which actually establish the foundation, um, I can't, I can't determine or not whether or not they meet the, that lot coverage, building height, um, requirements. That is double-checked and confirmed as part of the permit process through the billing department. So, so at this point, we don't have that data, but they will have to comply with those requirements in order to get their building permits.
No, understood, and I asked because I, I thought we typically had this. For example, I know height is something that we, we, we talk about, right, in, in, in some of these meetings. I thought the coverage of the lot area, but, but, but yeah, I, I take your point, that was my question.
Mr. Faizan, we don't typically get into that level of detail when we talk about single-family site condominiums like this, that are, that are more like subdivisions. We talk about that issue much more when we talk about, um, either multifamily projects or projects within a form-based district, but, but they have to meet the higher requirement, they have to meet the, the lot or coverage requirement, and...
No, I, I, I understand, appreciate the clarification, so when we have two different uses, we're more concerned about that. Okay.
I see Mr. Tagle's, uh, indicating he'd like to, go ahead, John.
I just follow up on Faizan's question. Ben, those are zoning ordinance requirements. Can, can you help explain to us all why they're, uh, less, uh, I don't want to say less important, but if they're not checked at this level, uh, of review, and also, why isn't there a landscape plan? That's another requirement, is it not?
I think Ben's having a little difficulty there.
Oh, yes, I had it by phone now. Is that better?
Yeah, we hear you clearly.
Okay. Sorry, can you repeat whatever question I missed?
I don't know what you missed, so I'll start from the beginning. Um, so, the following up on, on Carlton's question was that these are all zoning ordinance requirements, the heights, the setbacks, the lot coverage, and I just was wondering if you could explain to the commission why it's, uh, not viewed as important to review at this point in the process, and why it's, uh, kind of left over to, to give, uh, to let the building department review it, as well as a landscape plan is a requirement of submittal to this body, and I'm just wondering, why wasn't there a landscape plan submitted at this round? There was last time we saw this. You, can you respond to that at all?
Well, I can respond to the first part about permitting, um, because typically, what we look at as basic is, is, is drafts, for lack of a better term, preliminary or draft elevations and floor plans, and those haven't been finalized, so, um, we could certainly ask the applicant to put those, those within the building envelope itself, but, um, I don't think that detail has been worked out at this point, and I assume it would be probably worked out based on whoever the client or future occupant of that space is going to be. It may shift a little bit, so they're going to have to get that reviewed by the building department at the time in which they get the permits to establish that foundation. Um, we could certainly ask that in the future, Mr. Tagle, if you'd like them to show where...
Well, I, I think it's reasonable to show what the setbacks are, what the building height is, and if they're providing a sketch or whatever they're providing for us to look at, to make sure that whatever they're providing is within those boundaries. Now, if they want to, you know, exceed the requirements, that's certainly their purview, but I don't see any reason why the setbacks aren't shown on the site plan, or the, uh, the maximum heights of buildings aren't shown in the elevations, which...
The setbacks, Mr. Tagle, the setbacks are on the, on the plan, they're the building envelope, that's the setbacks. So they have to, they can have to put the structure, whatever it may be, within that box, and that, whatever they put in that box can't exceed the requirements of the lot coverage.
Right, so really, what we are saying is that they will comply with this based on our approval of moving this along, that they can't go outside that setback requirement.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's another way, I mean, yes, that gets confirmed by the building department, once this gets moved and approved by this, by this commission. Yes.
And, uh, any, any response to the landscape plan?
We asked the landscape plan, the plan that they gave us was, was the old one, that was from five years ago, it didn't comply, and so we've asked for a revised one, and they have not provided to, to date.
Okay, Paul asks a petitioner when, when we have an opportunity. Thanks.
Anyone else for, for Carlisle or Mr. Savadon? Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Carlisle, talking about the buffer requirements in the landscape plan, is, is there any kind of a requirement for a buffer on the west side of the property facing the home that's, uh, to the west of the, uh, proposed development?
Um, no, because there's no road there, it's rear yard to rear yard. The only reason is the buffer requirement is because it's road to a rear yard.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Seeing none, I'll, uh, ask the applicant to, uh, come forward and, uh, review our, your project with us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Powell. I'm the design engineer, and I'm representing the applicant, uh, today. Uh, I am the president of Powell Engineering. Uh, our office is at 4700 Cornerstone Drive in White Lake, Michigan. Um, I have been very interested because the questions from the Planning Commission have been very good, um, despite, uh, Mr. Carlisle losing some communication there. Um, the, the questions regarding the condominium versus the plat, as many of you might know, um, these lots have not been sold yet because they have not been created yet, and so, once they are created, they will be put on the market, and then the home, the home buyers that would come in, they'd be marketed, the people that come in and want to purchase a home there, uh, they will have some options. Which lot do you want to buy? Uh, which home profile do you want on which, on which lot? Uh, what special features do you want in your house? And so, uh, none of those items are known at this time, uh, when we're presenting it to you, the Planning Commission. It's unlike a, a plan as, uh, as Ben, uh, stated, a, a commercial plan or a multiple plan where a developer's coming in and building the building, and we're presenting the building to you. Uh, what we can do is provide examples of elevations to make sure that you like the, um, architecture and this layout and things like that. Uh, I think Ben did an excellent job representing that, um, these homes, as they're sold, they have to fit within the building envelope, and that is defined, uh, by the dashed line in the center of the lot, and that building envelope then meets all the requirements of the, uh, zoning ordinance, um, but the homeowner can slide his home anywhere he wants within that building envelope, and then the building department just, uh, verifies that the home is in fact, uh, within that building envelope. The, um, um, the landscape plan, uh, certainly, uh, let me back up. There, there are two aspects of this plan that are substantially different and much better than the plan that was approved in, uh, 2015, and I credit, uh, Brent and Ben for pointing these out because they are very, very good, uh, recommendations. First of all, um, to require a, um, a landscaped area, not within the road right-of-way, um, up against the properties there to the east. Um, that was a very good pickup, uh, by, I think, Brent, because it, without that landscape buffer, um, the homes to the east would have two frontages. They'd, they'd be fronting on two roads, and that would be unfair to the property owners that are existing there. So by providing that, um, limited common element, it's called, it's a buffer yard that is not part of the roadway, that, that then, uh, prevents the technical, um, definition of them fronting a road because there is actually privately owned property between the roadway and the property to the east. Um, the other item that, uh, is different than the 2015 plan, and this is a change in the position, and rightly so, of the fire department, uh, they did not want to have to drive down this road and then have to back out to Andrew Drive, if in fact, they needed to have a, an emergency vehicle, emergency vehicle or a large one down this roadway. So we had to meet the National Fire Protection Association requirements for a turnaround at the end of the road, uh, which is fairly substantial for the large vehicles that Troy now fights fires with. It looks like a driveway, and it's not, it's actually part of the roadway system, uh, back on unit number one to the north, so it, a, a large fire department vehicle can pull up to the end of the road, they can back into that little turnaround, and then pull out, um, back out and head south, uh, out of the, uh, out of the subdivision or a site condominium. So that has to be maintained and plowed by this association. Um, Brent, I'm sure in his presentation would have provided, uh, another major difference because... sure in his presentation, would have provided another major difference between a plat and a condominium. Condominiums have very strong homeowners associations. They're responsible for all the work within the development. They're responsible for their own policing of modifications, of placing sheds, things like that. And so there's a very detailed set of legal documents that give the homeowners association a great deal of power in what happens within their condominium. So those items I wanted to bring out to the planning commission and share with you that they have made this project much better than the one that was approved in 2015. Now for the landscape plan, we recently received approval of this turnaround and the modifications that your planning department and the fire department wanted. And there just was not enough time to submit a revised landscape plan. And but to delay this, it's already... We had this ready quite a while ago, and because of the COVID, the owner was really asking, and the planning staff allowed it to proceed so that they can go and start building this project first thing in the spring and start selling the lots. The intent is to provide a landscape plan very similar to the one that was approved in 2015. And as Brent and Ben suggested, some discussion needs to be had regarding the potential extra plantings on the east side of Catherine Lane so that there might be some enhancement to what the existing, the previously approved landscape plan is. And so it was important for us to come before you and find out whether or not you had some input. And then the landscape architect can use that input to provide for the final landscape plan that we're hoping that Brent and Ben can then review. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I've been doing site condominiums since 1980, and so I'm very familiar and can help the planning commission if you have any questions.
So Mr. Savadon, go ahead.
Not a question, more a comment. Although we did not have an up-to-date landscape plan, I thought it was still an opportunity to, given the fact that we had one from 2015, to use as kind of a base, that it was still an opportunity to still move forward with this application. So that was my judgment. Again, I thought, given the fact that we had that 2015 landscape plan, we could still have discussion and move this forward or whatever action you think is appropriate.
Very good. Mr. Rahman, you had a comment?
Yeah. Do you know, is there any reason why this project was not continued in 2015? And I think it was mentioned that it was not approved within three years. That means, was it submitted for approval, or it was just not even submitted for approval?
Yeah, the economics for the owner just were not appropriate. And so they decided to hold and put their efforts into other projects, and they knew that this was going to lapse and that we had to virtually start over again now. And quite frankly, they're going to spend more money to do it now. And between the engineering and the landscaping, I think that it's going to be a better project now.
So my question was, after getting preliminary site plan approval, the owner did not want to proceed further. And that's how the time was lapsed. And then, okay.
That is correct.
Any other comments or questions for the petitioner? Seeing none? The only comment I have, I'd like to ask Mr. Savadon, are you comfortable with us approving it tonight and then having the landscape plan fit in within the city guidelines? Or is there something we should definitely do now as far as the landscape?
I'm comfortable with any direction the planning commission gives me. We've got the zoning ordinance standards, and we've got, again, the plan from 2015. And based on our discussion this evening, we can certainly move forward with any recommendation the planning commission has regarding landscaping.
Any comments about the landscaping from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Faison.
So in the packet, I think it had comments from the previous, or maybe even the resolution from the previous application. And one of the comments is clarify birmingham and screening on the landscape plan along the western property line to indicate the planting of a berm and evergreen tree space 12 feet as shown on the site plan. And so I was confused because I thought that Mr. Lambert asked a question about the western property line. And I think the comment was there would be no screening there.
Could you answer that, Mr. Powell?
Yes, the intent is there will be some screening as represented on the 2015 plan, but there is no ordinance requirement for screening along the west property line because it's residential to residential.
Okay, so there will be screening. It's not required, and it's not in the current site plan.
It's not in my site plan, but I believe the existing landscape that you have, the 2015 landscape plan, has some landscaping along the west property line. And I apologize, I do not have that in front of me. But maybe Brent can tell us whether or not there's any... I know there's no birmingham, and I didn't know if there were any trees being proposed along the west property line, Brent.
I don't see it, but maybe I'm missing...
To clarify, you're correct, Mr. Faison. The landscape plan does not show any landscaping along the west property line. All of the proposed landscaping is located east of the units.
Thank you, Brent.
I have a question to ask.
Go ahead, Ms. Malala Hawley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brent. Mr. Powell, just so that I understand this, I know that this is being proposed between two houses, right? There are already two existing properties on the west side and the east side. Okay. When the proposed road that you have, Catherine Drive, that you have proposed, when that road is laid out, I just want to know the distance between the already existing property to this road, considering the landscaping is also going to be part of that. What is the measurement in terms of feet? What's the distance we are looking at, approximately, of course?
Approximately 25 feet between the new back of curb and the east property line.
Okay. So this is the area where we are also considering some kind of landscape screening. Do we know currently, the house that exists, do we know whether they have any kind of landscaping already present, any kind of trees, anything there, or is it just very open?
I think Mr. Saviant suggested that there were birmingham and some vegetation and some landscaping there. But I apologize, I do not know your answer.
Okay, no worries. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yes, just to clarify, there is a row of landscaping that already exists along that property line. It's still unclear as to exactly whose side it's on. But regardless of whether or not it's on this property or their property, there still is a requirement that they still have to meet that landscaping buffer. So it would be kind of a balance suspenders to add this additional landscaping because that landscaping, if the other property owner decides to take it down, that can be gone tomorrow. And so there is still a requirement to buffer this property from that property. And just to be clarified, the requirement is a small evergreen every three feet. And when we mean small, it means five feet at time of planting. Just to be clarified, what the minimum is. Now, that doesn't mean that they could put more in, or they couldn't put a fence in or something to supplement that landscaping, but that's the minimum requirement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Or any questions at all? Ms. Parakis?
Yeah, I had a question for Mr. Powell. I'm looking at the agenda, or it's not the agenda, the packet on page 40, where it shows that T road. And perhaps it's not the best picture of it, but the T sort of goes right up to the first unit. And it's a little bit confusing. And then when you look at like a page 22, it seems a little bit more distance. I mean, is that T area right in front of a unit? It's not off to the side of it? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yes, and it is off to the side of it. If you take a look at my drawing S1, you can see that that T turnaround is not within any building envelope. It doesn't go up to any building envelope. And it is, it stops just short of where the potential front of a house would be, but it's off to the south of the home. So the home's going to be pushed to the north side of this lot.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, sorry to interject again, but Ms. Parakis, just to be clarified, clear, the drawing on page 40 was the drawing, was the site plan for the previously approved project. So that's why there's the discrepancy between what you're seeing on page 40 and what you'll see on page 21. 21 is the current site plan.
Okay, okay. All right, sorry. That makes more sense. I couldn't reconcile the two pictures, and it was confusing me. I understand now. Thank you.
I apologize, too. I don't have that 40-page product in front of me. So thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Savadon. Turn on your mic, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant submitted a well-end determination as part of this, and there is a non-regulated wetland, which means they can fill it without having to go through the state of Michigan. It happens all the time. But my point is, on page 37 of your packet, there's a zoomed-in aerial photograph that shows the landscaping on the parcel to the east. And you'll notice there's a double row of evergreen trees on the neighboring property to the east.
Yep.
That was, that question was asked a few minutes ago by one of the commissioners.
Yep. Any other questions before a resolution? Mr. Roush?
I have a question in reference to the landscape requirements. Given that the landscape requirements, as Ben just stated, would we require a planting on that east side, I believe you said, three feet between each planting, and the existing landscaping that is on the neighboring property is... Would the applicant, without having to submit a landscape plan to this body, be able to submit a landscape plan that would not provide for trees with that spacing because of existing landscaping?
No.
Okay. And so my only other comment would be is, given that there's been three years since the original application, and now I personally can't see the reason why the applicant couldn't wait to submit a landscape plan to this body.
Any other comments or concerns? Seeing none? Does someone want to move a resolution? Go ahead, Mr. Tagel.
I resolve that the preliminary site condominium approval pursuant to Article 8 and Section 10.02 of the zoning ordinance as requested for Casa Villa of Troy Site Condominium, four units for lots, four units slash lots, east of Crooks Road, south of West South Boulevard, number 88-20-04-100-085 and 88-20-04-100-086. Section 4, currently zoned R1B, one-family residential district, be granted subject to the following. Submit the required landscape plan. Work with engineering department to work out private road specifications, including placing sidewalk within easement prior to final approval. Provide second elevation during building permit review.
Do we have a second on that? Mr. Rahman, seconds. Discussion on the resolution. Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, Mr. Savadon or Mr. Carlisle, does that language, as far as the landscape plan, give you enough direction?
I would say yes, because basically what it sounds like is the planning commission is directing the applicant just to do a landscape plan that's in compliance with the zoning ordinance, nothing above that. So that we have direction in the ordinance to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion before we vote? Now, seeing none, Ms. Arnicki, could you do a roll call, please?
Ms. Malala Hawley?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rahman?
Yes.
Mr. Roush?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, planning commission. And I always enjoy coming in front of you. Hopefully, you can be face to face next time.
Very good. Thank you for being here, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the Planning Commission 2020 Annual Report. You want to handle that, Mr. Savadon, or is it...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Planning and Enabling Act requires that planning commissions prepare an annual report summarizing their activity over the last calendar year. We've been doing this for a number of years, as some of the longer-serving planning commission members will recall. So this satisfies the requirement of state law, and it also is really effective, I think, as a tool for the city council and residents to see just how active we've been. Now, obviously, the pandemic has impacted the number of meetings we've had and some of the volume of our work. But still, it's still pretty impressive that even during a global pandemic, we're still able to get quite a lot done. 2021, I think, is going to be more promising than 2020 in terms of the volume of projects. But this is a summary of what the planning commission did in 2020.
Any thoughts or comments from the commission about their annual report? Mr. Roush?
Yeah, I only have one question. There was a zoning ordinance amendment proposed that was sent to city council. Is that something that doesn't show up on this report? Not a requirement?
One second, Mr. Roush. I just zoomed out here.
Unless I missed it.
No, you did not miss it. Good catch. So I'm actually missing a proposed text amendment.
I see a zoning ordinance text amendment for cluster square footage. Is that not the one?
That's one of the... There was amendment related to the neighborhood nodes, related to height and setbacks. Thank you, Mr. Roush. Good call. So I will amend this to reflect that. So when I put this on the website, which we do, and when I propose, when I move this on the city council, it will be more accurate. So good eyes, Mr. Roush. Appreciate that.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go on to the number eight, which is the Planning Commission comments. Let's have Ms. Malala Hawley. Go ahead. Any comments tonight?
No, none. Thank you.
Mr. Faison?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Mr. Tagel?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Rahman?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Lambert?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Roush?
I'm all set as well.
Ms. Parakis?
I'm also all set. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
Maybe I misheard, but when they introduced, I think Brent did, Mr. Carlisle, he referred to him as the planning director.
Yes, I agree with the same thing.
Can you give us an explanation, Mr. Savadon?
That was, I think that was Ben's attempt at being funny.
Oh, good.
It wasn't my attempt at being funny, I was just being funny.
No other comments? Very good. I have no comments with that. Those meetings adjourned.
Thank you.